I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for July 1st, 2024. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Roll call, please. Mayor Heath, present. Mr. Banky.
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry. Absent. And Commissioner Goss.
Present.
All Commissioners present with the exception of Commissioner Castleberry. May I get a motion to excuse Commissioner Castleberry?
So moved.
I'm sorry, who was it? Okay, thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please. Mayor Heath. Yes. Commissioner Banky.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Goss?
Yes.
Approved with unanimous vote. At this time, we will have public comment on all items on the agenda for the evening. We will begin inside the city chambers first, and just to reiterate, there's a three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and place of residence. And just to also remind you that please no derogatory or defamatory comments or any profanity is allowed. After we have exhausted all public comment inside the city chambers, we will then open it up to Zoom participants for this portion. And again, just to reiterate, this is items on the agenda. We will begin now.
My name is Dorothy Schmidt, and I live at 428 Elm Street. I have one question, and that is the police order along Maple Street for resurfacing in Maple Street. I assume that's why the signs are going up.
That's a public comment for the end. Or is it on there? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're right.
No, it's on here.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's item D.
Oh, yes, sorry.
And my question is, where's the gravel coming from that is being used? How sharp is it on our tires? And what is the final surfacing of asphalt composition? And how long does it take to dry? Does it, is it four days or a week or whatever before it's really surfaceable? Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, inside the chambers, we will now open it up to Zoom participants for items on the agenda.
Ken Tokarz, 110 South Locust, Adrian, Michigan, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm calling in regards to the purchase of the Winter Street property. I think that Adrian City Commissioners have a fiscal responsibility to their taxpayers. Now, this project was taken on by a private entity, and that private entity was not able to secure a grant from the land bank. And I think it's ridiculous for the city of Adrian to step in and bail out this company. Recently had the Phoenix Project, and I know Mayor, you were at some of the meetings, Commissioner Roberts and Commissioner Goss. This is no different from the Phoenix Project. We have contaminated land, there's no appraisal, we're spending more money on it. I mean, we're applying for a grant for $500,000 to buy a problem that the state doesn't want. If there's such a problem with this land, let it revert back to the county and let the county take care of it. It's not our responsibility to take on a debt of a development that can't make this thing happen. And if they can't make this happen, what makes the city of Adrian think that they can make this happen? The other part, too, with the Adrian Collaborative or whatever it is, are any of the Commissioners investors in that company? Do any of the Commissioners own land around this property? Do any of the Commissioners invest in another investment group that is providing money for this project? I think there's just too many similarities between this and the Phoenix Project, and you guys were so adamant against the Phoenix Project, and now you're doing something on your own that's just as bad. I wish that you would reconsider, take this off the agenda. We have no idea what it's going to cost. It could cost $30 million, and your limits are to approving the purchase of a truck, not applying for a grant that could cost taxpayers 20 to 25 million dollars. Phoenix Project, Phoenix Project. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, we will now move on to our work-study session, so I will turn it over to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're going to start our work session with a discussion of our local street millage. Matt Tomaszewski, our Engineering Services Director is here, he's got a presentation for you about that.
Good evening, everyone. I am Matt Tomaszewski, for those of you who don't know me. Tonight, we'll be talking about the street millage renewal. So...
Well, Matt's getting that. We have a current local street millage that's been in effect for, it'll be 10 years next year, and then will expire next year. It started out as one mill. It's been rolled back a little bit by Headley, and so the discussion is, shall we continue? That requires a vote of the people to do that.
Thank you, Greg. So we are asking for a renewal of the millage for the local street system. The current funding that we get from the state is not adequate enough to fund the maintenance that we need for our streets. So current revenue sources, we get all of our money, most of our money from Act 51, which is the gas tax. We get about $2 million in major funding, now 625 from local.
Can you just talk about the difference between major and local streets, too?
Sure.
For those who don't know.
So they are based on the width of the street, traffic counts, street regulations, how many stop signs, how many driveways, everything. So some of the differences, just different streets in town, Division Street would be a major, Maumee Street, Maple Street. Some of the local streets would include Vine Street, Stockford, Erie Street, those are local streets. So a lot of it's based on width and traffic volume and signage. So currently, we get about $370,000 from the millage each year. We also get about $80,000 from the Metro Act, which is from telecommunications. So we allow communication companies to run through town and lay their utilities. So we get money from them to put their utilities inside of our right-of-way. And as Greg had mentioned, some of the history behind our millages, we've been asked, we've asked the voters four times to renew the millage. 1996, 2016, 2006, 2016, and again this upcoming year. Last year, since the last millage, we've had $7 million invested, and we've got 42 miles of local streets. So that's only since 2016. So in the last nine years, we've invested $7 million over 21 miles of streets. So that includes 12.9 miles of preservation, which is what we're trying to attack mostly is our preservation, and I'll get into that in a little bit. So again, we've had a lot of progress made on our local streets, but a lot of work still needs done. So everything in orange is the local streets that have had some sort of work done within the last nine years. Everything in black, if you can see it, is the local streets that had not had anything done in the last nine years. So our plan is to obviously attack the ones in black, and what we have planned in the next five years is highlighted in yellow there. So there are still some that aren't highlighted. They're still in decent condition, obviously, we'd like to attack them if we could, but funding just doesn't allow for it. So this is currently the plan, the next five-year plan with the millage in place, if approved. If we do not get the millage approved, well, a lot of the yellow will go away pretty significantly. Some of the benefits of the renewal, the streets will continue to deteriorate to a point where the repairs will be too costly to fix. Well-maintained streets have less wear and tear on your cars. Good street system can affect new investment in residents. And there's an increased recreational opportunities for bicyclists, et cetera. And again, there's no additional tax burden, it's what we have currently. And we will have roughly $4 million over the next 10 years to provide towards maintenance of our streets. So if this is approved, the millage rate for a home value of $50,000 will be about $25 a year. On the larger scale, a home value of $200,000 will be about $100 per year. So the plan is for the money to go towards these methods here, preservation, milling and resurface, base stabilizing, and a reconstruct. We look at every street every year to determine what's the best scenario for each street based on their traffic count, their condition, their underlying condition, the curb condition. We look at every, again, every single street every year is based on a PESA rating, which we actually just completed this year's today. So going through, we rate every block of the street, 1 through 10, and that gives us a good base point to where we need to spend our money accordingly. And then we look at how much traffic is used in that street, and what's the underlying base condition, and if we have funding for it. Michelle, can you click on that other side again? Thank you. So preservation applications, this is sealing the cracks and trying not to allow the water to get into the subgrade. This is between $2 to $7 per linear foot, and it extends the life expectancy from three to six years. Next is milling and resurfacing, which is just taking the top two to four inches off and replacing the top surface layer with new asphalt. This is about $40 per linear foot and extends the life of about 15 years. Base stabilization, which is a newer technique that we've been using the last couple of years, and has worked out really well, includes grinding the bottom, well, the top, six to 10 inches of base, injecting either an emulsion base or cement-based material, and compacting it down. This strengthens the surface, strengthens the base, creating almost a cement street underneath. And this cost is about $60 per linear foot and will last about 20 years. And then the last thing, the thing that we try to stay away from the most is a total reconstruction, and this is taking everything from the asphalt to the base, to the curb, to the drive approaches, everything out entirely, and bringing in all-new material. This is about $95 per foot in the last about 25 years. So the plan is to focus on preservation first. Set aside a minimum of 100,000 in the capital budget in order to focus on chip and fog, seal coating, crack sealing, ultra-thin overlays, micro surfaces. All those are preventative techniques to use for preservation. Michelle? Thank you. Mill and new surface when possible, only when the top surface is in really rough shape. If the base is good underneath, and just the top two inches need to be replaced, we'll look at milling and resurface. Base stabilize is taking the base underneath, and if it's still got some life to it, injecting that emulsion or cement base that we talked about, and putting a new surface on. And then the last option, of course, is the reconstruct, and that's only when we have no other options. And that is to start fresh and then add it to our maintenance plan. So the plan is to have all the local streets on a 10-year timeline for maintenance and rehab. The language that we would be proposing to put on the ballot is here, and I'll read it to you. Shall the Charter of the City of Adrian be amended for purposes of paying the cost of public improvements, including local street improvement, to authorize the levy and collection of one mill, which is $1 per 1,000 of taxable value per year for 10 years, beginning in 2026, replacing the current millage? If approved, it is estimated that one mill would raise approximately 400,000 annually. So again, this is a renewal, we're not changing anything to the existing system. So we are asking to put this on the ballot for November 5th, 2024, and to do so, we would have to present to you guys a resolution that you guys would vote on, probably in the next couple upcoming commission meetings. Here are some of our local streets that are still out there that have not been rehabbed yet or preserved, and then this is some of them that we've completed in the last couple of years with the millage in place. So do you guys have any questions?
I do.
Sure.
So we've done 42 miles so far, approximately, how many more miles is there?
We've done 21 miles so far in the last 10, nine years, and we have 42 miles of local streets.
42 miles of local streets. So we've done half.
Correct.
Okay.
We're proposing a one-mill. Currently, what are we assessing with the Headley rollbacks?
.964, if I remember correctly.
So is it renewal or a tax increase?
Well, we would ask that it be reset at one-mill, which was how it started. I mean, undoubtedly, it'll end up getting rolled back the way the last one did as well, but, you know, if we set it at the current rate, then that will get rolled back, and it will be even less money.
Is there any discussion about having that assessed at 1.1 mills and then capping it at a maximum of one? So as Headley erodes at that, it maintains at the one. The school district had done that previously.
Well, that's, I mean, if that's a proposal, that's something that you could all discuss. We need to have this ballot language worked out by when, Matt?
I think it's the end of August.
All right.
That sounds, yes.
So we have that much time to figure out what exactly we want to put on, if in fact we're going to put it on the November ballot. Doesn't have to be on the November ballot, as Matt mentioned, it doesn't expire until the end of 2025, but for budgeting purposes, we kind of got to know that in early 2025 that it's going to be renewed or not, as the case may be. So our goal was to put it on the November ballot. Also, that allows the maximum number of people to have a chance to vote on it.
And this, does this, this doesn't have any impact on special assessments for curb and gutter? In terms of how we currently allocate or assess those?
No, the program for that is to, Matt came up with a formula starting this year, Matt, for, you know, local street resident or property owner participation in that, which is what? Remind me, Matt?
I don't know off the top of my head.
But it was an amount that was, it is no longer expressly for curb and gutter. What we did up until this year was we estimated the cost of curb and gutter and driveway approach work for each property.
And I'm just saying that this doesn't change what's currently in place.
It would not be the intention to change the process of asking for participation by the particularly benefited properties to a certain percentage, no.
Okay. I guess I would just weigh in in the fact that if we are currently, if we've suffered Headley rollbacks, and we're not currently assessing the full one-mill that we asked our taxpayers to approve, that slowly erodes and eats away our ability to work on roads each year, that we consider having a discussion about asking for more than one-mill, but communicating to the public that the most will assess in any one year is one-mill, so that that one-mill remains consistent over the next 10 years, hopefully, as Headley continues to eat away with that funds.
What I'm supposed to say or not say here, since I'm new, but the problem, the only problem I foresee with that is if you do go to 1.1 mills, you're really talking, now you've got to label it as a new millage, okay? It's no longer a renewal. As long as the, even with Headley's, the effect of Headley, if you, if the amount of the increase is less than .5 mills, then you can label it as a renewal. So in this situation, if we're at .98 mills, it's a renewal back up to one-mill. But if you were to go over the one-mill that it started at, now you've got to call it a new millage. And that may, that may affect its...
Ability to pass.
Yes. That's only, I give you some caution.
Not saying that we wouldn't do that. I'm frankly shocked that we're only paying average $25 to $100 per year for our roads locally. That seems like a very low amount. I didn't remember that from other discussions, so.
Matt, going back to the question from earlier, what's going to happen on Maple Street, explain that process to everyone.
So that is a chip and fog process. They were supposed to be in today until their distributor went out again. They will be coming back through and putting a fog sealant over the top of the stone. It'll, it'll only take about an hour to dry, and it'll be smooth over as more vehicles drive over it. So that is just a preservation method. Is there anything else that I missed with that?
Do we have to give you direction? I mean, this is usually where we ask, like, do you need direction?
I guess I will need direction whether we want to do a new millage or renewal, and based on that, I can write up a resolution for the next meeting.
Okay.
Are we 100% sure it was a charter amendment previously, Matt? Or was it just a voted millage?
I can look at the language.
I checked on that, because that's not the, Fred doesn't think that's the normal procedure.
Because all charter amendments must be submitted to the governor, and I doubt very much that we submitted this to the governor.
I think I read a memo today that we did.
You actually submitted?
I think so, I think the...
I'm not used to that, my apologies.
I will look at the, sorry, that was a lot. Was it 2014?
Yeah. So it was 16?
The millage was 2016, it was presented in 2014.
November 2014 mill.
Yeah. I'll look at the memos and the documents that we have.
That's far more complicated, Ralph, than...
I'm in favor of having you move forward with a renewal.
Okay.
I think if this is, if, I'm hoping, assuming, shouldn't assume, I'm hoping it will pass, and then maybe we could have more discussions with the public once this passes and go, okay, we have this amount of money now, and this is only what we're paying for home, is there a chance that we could do another on top of this later on? I don't know. But I, right now, I'm leaning towards just a renewal.
As well as I am as well, because I think, I know people really care about the roads, and I am very surprised as well, as Commissioner Roberts, on the amount that we do pay for our roads, but, and I know everybody's very concerned, but I think the minute that they hear it's going to go up and they're going to be paying more, I would fear it wouldn't pass. I could, I'd be concerned about that.
I too agree that we should do a renewal. People that talk to me about the roads are pretty impressed by what you and your staff does to keep our roads where we are, and the improvements that we're coming along with. With a little bit of money that you have, I'm very impressed by everything you do, and I would think a renewal is exactly what the community would want. Right now, I think they would balk at a new millage. That's just my opinion.
I'm in favor of renewal.
I'm in favor of renewal as well. I don't think if we need to raise it that much, let's not do that, let's get a renewal on, get this passed.
What's the amount that we've lost in Headley in the rollback?
It's probably been about $30,000 each year.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah, we're in discussion right now, so.
My other question is this. Why 10 years? I mean, one of the reasons that you could redo it in a shorter period of time is that you could, you could take care of Headley by bringing up a renewal more frequently and bumping it back to one-mill. So it doesn't necessarily have to be a 10-year renewal on the millage. So if you did a four-year renewal, which would be good, because then it would coincide with the election period, you're not caught, this, do a four-year renewal, after four years, if it's been reduced by Headley, you renew it back to one-mill.
And that's an option, too?
Well, I... You're in my keep, I'm leaving.
You're done.
Any other questions for Matt, or anybody else have an opinion on which way to go here?
Yeah, thanks for the comments.
Are we done with the, we going to move to a four-year or a 10-year?
I don't know.
I'd say four-year, that's the best, seems to make a lot of sense.
I'd like to see what other communities do, I think, I don't know, that seems really short, Fred.
Not really, I mean, most communities, most of the millages in the communities I represent, like fire, fire millages and things like that, most of them are all four-year.
Are they really?
Yeah, they're really not that long, because the problem is, is that, you know, as you say, you get the rollback, and 10 years is a long period, you don't know what's going to happen over a 10-year period. And unless you're concerned, I mean, the only reason you go longer is if you think, well, we don't want to keep bringing it before the electors, but honestly, this is, you know, one-mill is not something that, for roads and people are in favor of road repair, I don't think it's got much of a opposition to it, but, you know, that's up to you guys. I mean, relative to why you do it, but it's very seldom that I see 10-year renewals on stuff like this. And I just see them as, again, I don't see them as charter revisions, what I just see them as is of extra-voted, extra-voted millage.
Since we have time till August 13th, Christie just figured out, is it possible maybe at our next pre-meeting to bring back, like, what, you know, like, what communities in our area are doing, or what that looks like?
Sure. I can gather some information.
We've got time to do that.
We have time, so is that enough? I think that would make us all feel more comfortable and can make it informed.
And maybe just have two resolutions available, one for four-year and one for 10-year.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, anything else on that? All right, the next item was requested by Commissioner Castleberry, who isn't here, but I will try to fill in on that. I don't know if you can see it, but up on the screen is our current ordinance regarding vacant building registration. So as most of you know, we have a group that meets periodically about addressing blight in the city, and we met, I guess it was last, it must have been two weeks ago, because we had the other meeting last week. And this was requested out of that meeting, and I was at that meeting, and the discussion was, as the next step in our... the discussion was uh as the next step in our light remediation efforts, would it make sense to strengthen this vacant buildings ordinance? What it currently provides for is a a fee and then uh an initial inspection of the building. And then a uh periodic payment of an escalating fee uh or depending on how long the building remains vacant. And the discussion was to the, to the effect of, well, is there a, a way to make it yeah, more painful, for lack of a better term, to have, continue to keep buildings vacant over a long period of time? Uh, and so one of the things you have to remember as it relates to uh things like this is that it it is a fee for a service, right? We we are not able to charge a penalty or a tax or uh or a fine for having vacant buildings. Uh, the fee is for something that we're doing in connection with or needing to do because the building is vacant. Uh, and Commissioner Castleberry suggested at the meeting, and I I think it has uh merit to look into this. Well, could we, could we up our game in terms of what we do and require an annual inspection of the not only exterior of the building, but the interior of a vacant building as well? And there's, there's some logic to that. Uh, one of the problems that we run into with vacant buildings and we just addressed it with our three buildings that we inherited there on South Main Street uh is that they deteriorate over time. And at a certain point, it is no longer reasonable to just keep repairing them. They deteriorate to such an extent that uh they then have to be torn down. And the only way we know that is by being inside of those buildings. We're, we're dealing with one on Tecumseh Street right now uh that um we can't get in because the property owner isn't cooperating. And uh there are, there's bricks falling off it uh onto the adjoining property. And we're trying to make an evaluation, can we order it to be demolished? But that's very difficult without being able to go inside of the building. Now, we can get a search warrant, but uh that requires an additional uh uh process in the court. So uh the idea was, do we want to, the the point for discussion is uh, do we want to add teeth to this ordinance? And Commissioners Gauss and Schwartz were at this meeting as well, and I'll invite them to chime in if I'm missing uh any part of the 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 intent in bringing this up. But uh one way to strengthen it would be to rewrite it to and to require a annual inspection inside. Obviously, we're going to increase the related fee to pay for that. There may be other ideas that you have uh as well about things that uh need to be done. We've talked in the past regarding downtown vacant buildings of requiring uh a window treatment in those like uh we had in our buildings before we tore them down uh to kind of create a, you know, a faux interior view so that it's not off-putting to people walking on the street who can see in and see a bunch of pigeon crap or whatever. Uh, you know, where a store should be. Uh, so that might be something that we could add to this ordinance as well, if that was uh uh something uh that you thought would be uh useful uh in terms of the effort. The the basic idea behind the ordinance in the first place and behind improvements to the ordinance is to discourage leaving buildings vacant over a long period of time. And if they are going to be, to make sure that they don't become a nuisance uh to surrounding properties in the area. So open that up for discussion.
Well, I, as part of that discussion, I think that we heard over and over with all the vacant buildings and how they deteriorate, not just the buildings, but the neighborhoods and the quality of life in those neighborhoods. We need to become stronger in addressing those issues and help remove that blight as well. And so the hopes was to review this, to look at it, to strengthen it so we can help eliminate vacant buildings in our city. And I I guess I would be in support of uh the faux front. I did uh definitely like the improvement that took place on those three buildings, even though they were a terror inside. Um, compared to um several of the other um properties that are vacant. I guess my question would be, um, if we, if this does move forward, to make sure that it's not limited to only downtown properties?
No, the the ordinance doesn't only apply to downtown properties. Um, you know, my, uh, our discussions in the past related to the faux front has been related specifically to downtown properties because you do have the pedestrian traffic in front and, you know, they are of a nature where they have a display window in the front. Not, you know, most vacant buildings don't are aren't set up that way necessarily.
Yeah, this was not just limited to downtown, it was the city. No, I meant but the faux front in terms of if there's an empty building on Tecumseh Street that has, you know, windows that that uh window dressing for that vacant uh building also be addressed there, not uh not only downtown.
Good.
Um, what would be in terms of that conversation? What's the definition of vacant and when does it, when does that trigger? So is it the the instant it becomes vacant or um I'm just thinking, you know, my dad who learned how to beat the process on a lot of things, when you know your year's coming up, do you move in for a week? And then um and then does that reset the clock?
Oh, it keeps moving, but it's behind you there on the screen.
Maybe, Michelle, could you read that for us, please?
Sorry, couldn't make it any bigger. Vacant means a building, structure, or land shall be deemed to be vacant if no person or persons actually currently conducts a lawful licensed business or lawfully resides or lives in any part of the building as the legal or equitable owners or tenant occupants or owner occupants or tenants on a permanent, not transient basis. Buildings with multiple tenants and or uses and the land with more than one structure shall be deemed vacant if more than sixty percent of the ground floor, based on total square footage, is unoccupied.
So with uh this, um, how does estates uh come into play? So you you have someone that passes away, um, it's now vacant and they're in the process of settling the estate and trying to go through point of sale to deal with the um liquidation of the property. Is there a new layer that they're going to be forced to deal with as well?
I think uh as you go down through the language there, there's a point at which it kicks in. Not from where the registration is required there, Michelle.
I thought I read it was six months. Is that not true? Maybe it was a different one.
Looks like within sixty days of the vacancy.
Sixty days.
Required to register?
I hadn't remembered.
Which is for, you know, to your point, that is somewhat oppressive. Uh, you know, things are going to be on the market longer than that when they're in transition uh in an estate. And so that may be something we want to look at in our review of the ordinance as well. At one point, there's a kick in.
Uh, that's part of it, but it's ridiculous that we've had buildings for years.
Right.
That are vacant.
Agreed.
And that's, I'm sorry, that's ridiculous.
And this is both commercial and residential. We just want to be clear with that.
I believe it applies to both.
It, I mean, based on that definition, it does. And all we're asking for is uh requiring, if we change the ordinance right now, the ask would be to require an annual outside and inside inspection.
That was the discussion we had at the Flight Committee. Um, you know, and the idea being that there would therefore be a increased fee associated with that. Again, upping the pain point for those who are maintaining them over a longer period of time.
If we see stuff, let's say, let's say this passes and we go inside a home that's been vacant for five years. Um, and we, or a a, come on, let's do a commercial building that's been vacant for five years or whatever. And there, the roof is falling down, then we are allowed to take next steps, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, they're all going to be reviewed as every building is held to under the property name.
Right, right.
Greg, can you prepare an ordinance amendment proposed for us to look at in future meeting?
Yeah, you know, and consistent with your discussion tonight, if you're in accord with that idea, I will spare a draft uh probably for next time that you can take a look at.
Thank you.
Think too, we need to look at the timeframe.
I I think we need to look at the whole ordinance. If we're going to change one thing, let's look at the whole ordinance and make sure that we have everything in there that we want.
Yeah, I think the community would rally around that to be able to see that we're being more aggressive. Put his tooth to it. I I know that when it gets to the point of a, a building needing to be torn down, I know we go through the court system to, to go after the person who owns that building, and I know that's a struggle too.
Well, I I mean, I'll say not necessarily. If it's a dangerous building, we, we don't need to go to court. Uh, we will tear those down. And that's probably what's going to happen to that one on Tecumseh Street, but because that person doesn't show up to court, but um, yeah, and then the process is that we, you know, we bill the owner for the cost of the work that we've done. But in a case like that, you know, property's not worth that amount of money once the building's gone. And so we never get paid and we never get paid back. And so that's another reason why we don't want buildings, for many reasons that included, we don't want buildings getting in that condition in the first place.
And so we talk about this penalty phase that we can't charge, but we want to escalate it. So are we saying that over multiple years, we're going to spend a longer amount of time looking for more things over progressive years to try and up these fees? I guess that.
No, I, and and again, that's the way it reads right now. You know, I I I don't know that I follow the logic of how it works right now. It would be better to have it be even, you know, an even effort over each year as opposed to the idea that uh, you know, you're paying more and more unless there is some further thing we have to do because of the passage of time.
So in theory, if someone chooses to, would vacation property be considered um vacant property because they're not living in it?
It it shouldn't be. I, you know, we'll have to look at the definition to make sure it doesn't include something like that, but that would not be. Not, the the intent of the ordinance wouldn't be to include something like that. Is there any other discussion on vacant building ordinance? Not uh ask if there's any other items anybody wants to talk about for work study? All right, hearing none, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
May I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Like to uh suggest two modifications. If we could have the uh environmental justice impact grant and the uh purchase of the North Winter Street property. Move to the regular agenda, please.
Madam Mayor, I'd also like to uh take um CR twenty-four dash zero eight three about the uh extension of the marijuana application deadline. Um, I'd like to move that to the regular agenda as well.
And I would just ask a procedural question, uh, thinking out loud here. If uh two four zero eight three, um, if for some reason that were to go down, does that have an impact for um zero eight two?
No.
Okay, thank you.
May I get a motion to approve the agenda with the removal from the consent agenda to the regular agenda of CR twenty-four dash zero eight three, CR twenty-four dash zero eight five, and CR twenty-four dash zero eight six?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Banky. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
And Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Approved with unanimous vote.
May I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, the updated consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Approved with unanimous vote.
Moving on to our regular agenda, resolution R twenty-four dash zero twenty-six is from engineering. It is a resolution to waive the bid process and approve the purchase of a one-ton truck. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved. Support.
Are there any commissioner comments related to this or questions?
Just, just clarification. Just in discussion clarification on this, I do want to thank Administrator Elliott for uh his response because, you know, as a layman, I typed in one-ton GMC truck and found a truck that was significantly cheaper. And I'm thinking, why are we waiving the bid process on this when there's a truck in Garden City? That's um considerably cheaper than the price that was uh listed. And um, you know, upon further explanation, it is um special equipment that's also part of this truck. Um, and uh again, it was looked at through the source wealth um process and the bid process, and it's cheaper than that. Um, so I do um support that uh for an out-of-state purchase and waiving um the bid process, which I'm pretty usually adherent to.
We have a motion from Commissioner Banky with a second from Commissioner Miller. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Banky?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Resolution approved by unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-four dash zero twenty-seven is from the city clerk. It is a resolution to extend the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five commercial marijuana application renewal deadline. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Support.
Uh, is there any commission discussion on this resolution?
Yes, I have some, several questions um for Mr. Elliott. First of all, why is this extension necessary?
Uh, we have current licensees who uh failed to get their renewal application in by the deadline, which was, correct me if I'm wrong, Christie, the end of May. Um, I don't quite know why we've always, and Christie just carried forward what Robin always did in terms of a narrow period for uh renewal applications. I don't know why we did that other than I know she liked to compartmentalize that work. Um, I don't see a reason for it as long as we can process it in a timely manner. They don't expire until the end of July. And so it's still timely uh to get those in. Uh, and we certainly want them to continue their operating businesses uh in the city. And so we wanted to give them a chance. They realized it, but they realized it after May thirty-first.
So the commission has approved in the past the deadlines and and what the ordinance said. I I I don't know that it's, or see how that's our problem that they forgot. I, and I have trouble believing that they forgot. They usually have a pretty good, their finger on the pulse. And go ahead.
Well, one other thing that Robin used to do, which uh Christie wasn't aware of, is that she sent out a reminder to them all. Um, and so they did not get that reminder, which may have been what normally prompted them. You're right, they, it's their responsibility to know, but um, you know, I don't see a good reason to be punitive because they didn't realize that we had set what, you know, is really a somewhat arbitrary deadline. You're right, the commission sets those by resolution. Again, I'm not sure exactly why, other than that's the way we've always done it. Uh, you know, to me, uh, as long as you apply in time for the commission to take action on your renewal application before it expires, then, you know, that's a timely renewal app. application before it expires, then, you know, that's a timely renewal application. There is a little bit of, of investigation that we go through, but it's very minimal with renewals. Yeah, and I don't know, Christie, has that particular applicant gotten their application in now?
Um, I haven't received it, but they could be in speak.
Yeah, so they, I mean, this is a business that has three different licenses too. It's not something that really we want to have go away, I wouldn't say. You know, so that, that's, I mean, that's my explanation for why we're trying to accommodate them.
Okay, so the other question I have is, we knew the, the deadline was May thirty-first. Why are we just talking about it a month later? We had two meetings in May. It would seem as though if we wanted to extend it, we could have come forward with this resolution in either the first or second meetings during the month of May. So, I, I mean, this is, to me, this is kind of like, well, I'm gonna do it anyway and ask for forgiveness later. And I, I don't want to think that, but it just seems to me that if we're gonna extend it from May thirty-first to July fifth, we could have known about it before.
I, well, again, I, you know, it's not something that was on my radar, but, and probably not Christie's either. But when they called her and asked about it, she realized that, you know, their deadline had passed.
I think we need to give some grace to our employees for, you know, who are new to their positions. Now, I agree that the company should have known about the renewal deadlines with the city, but things change and I'm in for allowing this extension.
So can we have agreement up here now that when we approach the next expiration deadline, the letters will be sent out in advance so that we don't have to go through this again next year when the deadline passes and we still haven't gotten all the application? I mean, I just want the letters to go out the way they used to go out and, and give the license holders a heads up that the deadline is coming.
Yeah, we have gone ahead and done that. I, I let Christie know that that was Robin's practice after we addressed or became aware of this issue. You know, like you say, it shouldn't be necessary, but we also don't want to have businesses go away that are operating taxpaying businesses in the city, so. Uh, we have done that. We will do that in the future. I don't think we will set such a rigid deadline necessarily in the future either, or we wouldn't recommend that to you because it's not necessary. Right? A deadline in the middle of June would be more than sufficient for the limited amount of investigative work that goes into whether or not we're gonna renew a current permit.
Okay, thank you.
I have a motion, sorry, I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry? I'm sorry. Uh, Commissioner Gauss?
No.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Benke?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Resolution passes with a five-zero vote. Five, five vote, sorry.
Resolution R twenty-four dash zero twenty-eight is from Community Development. It is a resolution to authorize application for a five hundred thousand environmental justice impact grant. Sorry about that. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Um, can you reread that number?
Did I do it?
You said twenty-eight, I thought.
Yes, it will be R twenty-four dash zero twenty-eight. You have to go in order from the regular.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Sorry, sorry about that.
All right, sorry.
It's a resolution to authorize application for a five hundred thousand environmental justice impact grant. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved. Support.
Are there any commissioner comments on this?
Uh, can we put Jay on the spot to kind of celebrate this grant as an opportunity and kind of explain a little bit behind that, Greg? Or, or if you want to do it?
No, I gave Jay a heads up, so he's, he should be ready.
Yeah, and I guess, Jay, the question here is, this is a pretty unique opportunity for the city of Adrian to, to have this, to help address the major issue that we have over on North Winter, correct?
Uh, that's correct. There's a twenty million dollar allocation from Eagle for this environmental justice grant. Uh, we have a unique characteristics in our community that give us an advantage to apply for these type of dollars. And so this will allow us to apply for the grant for the demolition of those properties if you move forward with the purchase agreement on that. And it really helps us remit, remediate blight, you know, right, right in the middle of our town.
Part of the issue, i- is it correct that these can be applied very similar to the, the other conundrum that we had from municipalities, not from private industry?
Correct. We, we qualify as a municipality to apply for this grant, whereas you would have to bring a longer municipality if you were an individual applying for that.
And the, the rubric and the scoring system, we as a community get a higher priority than maybe some other cities in Michigan?
Yeah, there's only a couple cities that are above us that would get a higher priority than us, so we're, we're our, our proximity in the scoring rubric is, is very favorable.
And with five hundred thousand, what's the impact that you believe you can have on the downtown area and removing blight with this project?
So at five hundred thousand, we think that we could, i- i- if you move forward with the Winter Street properties, we think that we could take all of those properties down or get really close to taking those properties down.
Okay, so buildings, we're not talking about ground contamination?
Correct, correct. That'd be a different conversation with Eagle for the, for the ground.
Okay. Thank you, that was, uh.
What's that?
Might as well stay there.
Okay.
That, that was, again, I, I think this is an amazing opportunity for us and thanks for being responsive to being put on the spot.
We have a motion from Commissioner Benke with a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Benke?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Resolution passes with the unanimous vote.
Resolution R twenty-four dash zero twenty-nine is from administration. It is a resolution to ratify negotiated terms of a purchase agreement for North Winter Street property. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
So part.
Do we have any commissioner comments or discussion on this?
Uh, again, on this, this front, I want to make sure that in terms of public transparency and discussion, a- as we go into this, that the commission is fully aware that there's a vast difference between this property and the Phoenix Project property. That we go into this wi- our eyes wide open, discussion and advisement from the city attorney, and that this is something that's going to address the remediation of blight that exists in our city. And without our efforts here, we're gonna have contaminated soil and buildings for generations to come, just as we have had for generations in the past with those properties. So just one question in terms of the five hundred thousand dollars. This is not a bailout, as was previously alleged. Um, these are, this is for actual costs of purchase of property and additional environmental studies and those sort of things that have taken place already. So these are fixed dollars that we have tied expenses to that we can latch on to, not overpayment of property.
It's tangible assets.
Yes.
Absolutely. It's property, it's tangible things such as the, the survey work, environmental reporting.
Thank you.
You know, and the, and real estate. That's pretty much what, you know, the seller's documented costs for those items are.
And with this general fund dollars or grant dollars being used for that, I think that's an important piece as well to communicate out.
Uh, it's, we, so we, as most folks know, we received a legislative earmark of fifteen million dollars for downtown improvement projects and blight remediation, as well as improvements to the south branch of the River Raisin as it runs through town. And this, if, what most people probably generally don't know is that the legislators, when they were being pitched that idea, received a one-pager that specifically identified this property as the focus of that effort. Uh, and re- restoring the riverfront to its original condition along through this area, hopefully residential use on the Winter Street frontage of that and a reconstructed Winter Street in front of it. Uh, we've, we're quite hopeful and quite optimistic that we're gonna receive a, a tap grant for the work, reconstruction work on Winter Street through this area, uh, which together with the funds from the enhancement grant that we're devoting, will be a ten million dollar project to reconstruct the street in front of this property to be a downtown street uh, with a dedicated bike loop back to the Quanis Trail. Uh, we have previously discussed, uh, as a commission, acquiring the excess land that was not intended to be used for residential use here, uh, because that is the mission of that enhancement grant to restore the riverfront. This property comes with, I would say, most of the river frontage that's on the Winter Street side uh, between Maple and Mommy Street. Uh, and so we had previously negotiated for that, but after these property owners were turned down by the county land bank uh, for their own private grant application to demolish these buildings, uh, we thought it made sense to go ahead and just take down the entirety of the property as opposed to only the excess land. Because as Jay just described, we're in a position to leverage funds to get those buildings demolished, whereas they would not. Uh, and so, uh, this is very much within the mission of what we pitched to the legislature and what we received enhancement grant funds for. Only those enhancement grant funds are being used, uh, to acquire this property.
And again, not a short-term project in terms of conversation with the city on the purpose and the use of restoration, community use, uh, parkland, and then ultimately hopefully development coming as well. It's close to a year or at least.
Oh, it's been longer than that. I think that goes back to
Before my time.
Twenty twenty-one, that we first received that grant.
Right, thank, thank you. I just want to highlight the work that's taken place on that um, and that this, this will be good to remove contaminants, uh, blight, and a lot of other bad things from our community, um, to bring it up to a, a better standard for all of us to use.
I agree with Commissioner Benke, and I think that the majority of our citizens will appreciate the fact that they're not gonna have to look at the old Telegram building as it falls into decay and some of that other property down there. So I'm all in favor of using these grant monies, take care of that problem as we work on the beautification of the city.
I agree. This is a great project. I'm very, very excited about it. This is just the beginning, and it's, uh, I think some of the residents already understand the scope of this uh, and the vision of this project to be pretty, pretty fantastic for our city.
We have a motion from Commissioner Benke with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath?
Yes.
Commissioner Benke?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss?
Yes.
Resolution passes with the unanimous vote.
It is now time for public comment. This is general public comment. It can be about anything. It doesn't have to be anything discussed this evening. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit, and please state your name and your place of residence and, um, city of residence, sorry about that. And, um, please come up to the podium if you are inside the chambers for public comment. And when we have exhausted all public comment inside the chambers, we will then open it up to our Zoom participants.
Hi, I'm Sue Cliff. I'm an Adrian resident on Stonecrest Drive, and I have a concern about fireworks. Um, apparently we had a law in the past, I believe it was a city of Adrian law, that said, um, as opposed to the current one evidently now that we're following, that belongs to the state of Michigan. I seem to remember a local law that said, um, the day before a holiday, the day of the holiday, and the day after the holiday were the only days that fireworks were allowed. So, um, apparently that's gone now, and we follow what the state does, which is, um, I believe it's June twenty, or, yeah, June twenty-ninth through July fifth, which is seven whole days. It's a week of fireworks being allowed in the city limits. Um, and that's now, that's now, that's so, that's so, so intense, intense. I don't feel that so, I don't feel that so, I, I, this is, I have this up so close together in town. And of this, I, I'm very concerned about fire concerns. My daughter was a firefighter for eight years, and she can't believe that we let them happen in the city limits. She says it's just not good fire code. I have a neighbor that sits outside with her hose turned on, ready, because the next-door neighbor, a lot of them land on her roof from the next-door neighbor. And they're not put out when they land on a roof. And we came home from vacation one year, Fourth of July weekend, and there was a, I don't even know what it was. It was a firework of some type stuck in this wood siding of our house. And it wasn't on fire at the time, but, you know, it, that was a little disquieting to see that. So I would hope that you guys would consider adjusting this law a little bit. And I, I wish I could remember exactly when we had this previous law, but three days, three nights is a lot better than seven. So thank you.
Jerry Tim, Adrian resident. I find myself questioning the priorities of our city administration. Despite bringing to attention a violation of one of our own ordinances by our own city near these chambers two weeks ago, the sidewalk remains illegally closed. Chapter seventy-four, section twelve B of our Code of Ordinance states that at least five feet of sidewalk space shall be kept clean and clear for the free passage of pedestrians, and if building operations are such that such free passageway is impracticable, a temporary plank sidewalk with substantial railings or sidewalk shelter built in accordance with chapter one oh six of this code shall be provided around such obstruction. There is no such structure despite the sidewalk still being completely closed. Also, the setup closure signs are not ADA compliant and exacerbating accessibility issues. How can the city ethically enforce and in fact increase ordinances on citizens when it knowingly persists in violations of its own ordinances itself? Furthermore, a recent removal of established milkweed plants in Fee Park is troubling. Um, instead of nurturing established beneficial flora, our parks employees seem focused on eradicating them while allowing poison ivy growing inches from the removed milkweed to encroach on walking paths, posing risks to part visitors. I'd also like to inquire about a plan for restriping the several milled streets waiting for sealing. Have any considerations been made to enhance their compliance with complete, complete streets guidelines? For instance, could unnecessary turn lanes at the three-way stop at Ben Oak and Riverside be removed to improve safety for pedestrians accessing the trailhead? Let's prioritize adherence to ordinances, preservation of beneficial park ecosystems, and safety enhancements for our streets. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Tom Hillebrand. I live at twelve fifteen Berkshire Drive, Scott Ridge subdivision. Lived there about twenty-three years. Uh, we were the eighth house to be built there. Um, here tonight as a member of the Scott Ridge Owners Association, uh, representing over forty households out there. Uh, my question to the administration is, um, why we weren't made aware that the aesthetics of our subdivision that was developed almost thirty years ago is, there's an intention to change and bring sidewalks into our neighborhood. I wasn't contacted. None of the other residents, uh, the homeowners association wasn't contacted. Um, the way I found out about it was, um, we're tired, walk a lot. Um, we have two